Any discussions? If not, on favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, I made it on page 22 of your purchase order document. You have an item to Hoxton House. There was that person on that. Name is Hughes. It's $580. That had been removed. You see it on the door law, but this is a little bit chewy, but that person was eliminated. We don't pay. So all of these actually remain.
Alright.
It's based on one person who put it in 23 of the...
Right. It's uh... How much was the amount?
I figured it was $80. This would be huge.
Alright.
This is Hoxton.
Oh, okay. Alright, yeah.
Half page.
Yeah. I got you.
That's all. You know, it's a lead is a good amount.
Okay. $480. Alright.
Off.
Oh, okay. I got you. Alright.
I do have a question. The uh... The $12,759.84 for the Visitors Bureau. Do we know where that... Where that tracks with uh... With how it's been over the past couple of years? Are we considerably down? Are we uh... Huh? What is way down? Are we half? No idea?
Be more than half.
Right. Yeah. Cause I would be curious. Yeah, I would be curious to see what that figure is. Obviously, that's going to affect their budget as well as the Parks and Recs budget, right?
I'm gonna say it's coming about third. Mr. White will let us know. And... Penny, I mean Tracy wanted to think we talked about there's a recall. Is that right? Anthony?
That's a thing to our attention. Yes, sir.
Some hand sanitizer that we purchased and we have been recalled by the FDA because they contain methanol, which can be harmful. Apparently, it can be absorbed through the skin. It's much more harmful if you get it in your eyes or your mouth. So we've recalled them. We don't want anybody getting it in their eyes or mouth. It could be... Cause all kinds of symptoms, headaches, and if you take too much, could cause blindness or death. We're working on getting refunded. We spent $1,900 from the hardware store here in Martinsburg and then another $477 from Guernsey. And we're... One of the manufacturers already has the process to make claims and we're working on getting that refunded. But any questions about that?
I think Anthony, we got them all by department. They returned them now.
Yes, there have been... There were obviously some used, but they've all been returned back up to the office.
Okay.
I don't believe we have. I think some offices might have some of their own, but...
I think our email that was sent out said that if they returned them, we would... We had some to replace it.
If you have some... If you have some... You need that service to cure that. Yes, some.
Michelle Gotti, I also mentioned to Tracy that the state has sent stuff to Don, Don E. Fattner for voters. He's a gentleman.
We're gonna check into that. I'm not sure whether those have to only be used for the election or not.
Well, I'm just saying that if that stuff is still around, I'd be...
Yes. And we're also gonna check to make sure it also doesn't have methanol in it. You don't want to be passing that out at the polls.
Right.
Any other questions on the purchase order?
Yeah, the... What exactly is the um...
What page?
What page am I on? Seven, bottom of seven.
On the purchase order?
Yeah, the CSX transportation.
That's a crossing for down at the 911. Or likely it's a...
So is that a yearly fee that we pay?
Every year.
Every year.
But... Why are we paying that fee and...
Because on permit fee, it's a... Yeah, it's a cross that track there going to the day report center, old day report center in Central District. I guess you could ask the state to pay it, but maybe...
But still goes back to what the... What's the other place back to? Vicky Douglas?
Vicky Douglas.
Yeah. So they also pay?
Proportionally.
Yeah.
I wonder if we could get that section changed to...
Dedicated to state?
Just to the tracks?
Yeah. We can. There you go, Anthony.
Now the CSX.
No, no, but...
No, but if you had that first section, that first little bit dedicated to the state, the state took over the first little section, what are they gonna build a state?
I think the question would... I think Dan's on to something. I mean, we don't own any roads at all in the county. Right? We don't own a inch of road. Why do we... Why do we pay on a crossing fee unless that's private property we beat it over and right away to the state? Why wouldn't it not go to the other? Hmm?
I think we should probably look into it and see if there's something that could save a little bit. In... I'd appreciate that.
So relative to the CBB calendar year, I'm not gonna speak the fiscal, it's easier for me to speak the calendar year. Calendar year, pardon me, 2015 was 103,000. 2016, 101,000. 2017, 179,000. 2018, 187,000. And 2019, 167,000. That's...
What part of the year?
That's for the entire... That's the year. That's the year payment. You divide that by four.
So they probably took a big hit in the last... In the last few months of it.
That's correct. The final payment in 19 would have been September. We would have got an early one in '20, but it was 34,000 where it had been closer to 40. So and then the first payment, I'll tell you the first payment in '20 is that one. No, it wouldn't be the first payment. Hold on, I'm gonna tell you.
It's gotta be... It's gotta be more than 167,000 for the year though.
That's not for the year.
Because we budgeted $360,000 a year.
We're paying to the visitor center the calendar year 15, we paid them 103,000.
Oh, no, that's not that hard. I know that, but I think that total budget's 700 and some thousand.
Right.
Motel, hotel tax.
And I'm telling you what we paid them. We paid them in um... Four, actually five transactions. That year was 179 in calendar year 17. Depends on when they bill us, right? 2018 is 187 and 2019 is 167.
So we're... So what are we paying the Parks and Recs? It should be the same thing, right?
Yeah, we'd say that.
Uh, you have to find the vendor. You'd have to... Tracy, I'll tell you in a second.
What's her... Well, we talked about it by the time last week.
Well, and it's just a thought right now. It's good to... It's good to have that conversation.
Yeah, but if my memory serves me correctly, I thought we budgeted like 300 and some thousand dollars.
We did. I thought it was 350.
It's 350.
Yeah, I thought it was 350.
Cause we budgeted the whole thing for 700,000, split it.
Martin, Parks and Recreation, calendar year 2019, you paid them 149,316.
I will... I'll get my charge from both of them.
Hmm, doesn't sound right.
It doesn't sound right.
Well, the one year, I know we... Post-year, we're getting more than what we allocate. The tax.
And the only reason she said, he said for June was 34,000 and last month was 40,000. The center down in, we thought the customs, they had everybody leave, so we got a lot of the folks that were down there for instruction, ended up in our hotels, because they built those hotels to go. So that was the only reason we were anywhere close.
Go back to your seat. What you do, I'm not telling you to do that. When you go back to your seat, not go back to your seat, when you go back to your seat, look up the revenue projections for last fiscal year and this year. And I'm thinking it's seven something. 342 each.
She's so far away, I can barely hear.
Yeah, that's not right.
So something's not... I don't know what's going on, but it ain't something... Something's not adding up.
These are just what's paid to them. Just pay what you gave them.
It's mandatory. We don't have any choice. Remember the whole valley.
Right, so if that's what it's saying, we need to find out what, what, why there's a difference between that and, and the, uh, and the figure that was budgeted. Thank you.
I know we didn't miss about a bunch.
No, we didn't.
Actually, most times it was good. Alright, any other questions on the purchase order? There is no internal budget revisions, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, work my way through all these changes statuses. I was hoping you would go on. A new hire, change of status, we have a new hire recommendation received from Mary Cackling, Director of nine-one-one for Chris Lovardi.
Lovardi.
Lovardi as an Administrative Assistant Two with an annual salary of twenty-seven thousand, five sixty-seven effective July twentieth, twenty-twenty. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess for Linda Timber, um, as a part-time summer help with an hourly rate of ten dollars effective July thirteenth, twenty-twenty. Uh, new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Virginia Sign, uh, Circuit Clerk for Billy Joe Rymman, Rymman, as a clerk with an annual salary of twenty-five thousand, five fifty-four effective August the third, two thousand twenty. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable John Small for County Clerk, um, County Clerk for Darrell Shula, Chief Deputy Clerk for, uh, in voters with an annual salary of fifty-six thousand, six seventy-nine effective August first, twenty-twenty. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Sheriff Curtis Keller for Casey Miller as a part-time clerk with an hourly rate of ten dollars effective July twentieth, twenty-twenty. Okay, tax office. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Larry Hess for Len Marie Kels, Kelsel uh, as a clerk with an annual salary of twenty-four thousand effective July sixteenth, twenty-twenty. Change in status received from the Honorable John Small for Cas, Cassandra?
Sandra.
Cassandra, I'm sorry. Kessler, uh, she is going from part-time to full-time Deputy Clerk with a, uh, salary increase from seventeen dollars and twenty-two cents per hour to thirty-five thousand, six ninety-six, annual, annually effective August first, twenty-twenty. Is that in the, his county clerk?
That's what I thought.
Letter of resignation received from the Assessor's Office for, uh, uh, the, the Ren, Arian Rankin effective July sixth, two thousand twenty. Letter of resignation received from the Recovery, uh, Resource, uh, Center for Austin Tippin effective July thirteenth, twenty-twenty. Letter of, uh, resignation received from the Sheriff's Office for Micah Hudson effective July twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty, and I'm glad I'm off the supervisor of the judiciary. Any questions on my pronunciation?
You may, you got seventy percent of them, really good.
I'm just glad I made it to math class. Alright, um, we have a set of minutes to approve in July, for July second, two thousand twenty, Burke County Council, uh, Vice President Delian was not present. Anybody wanna make a motion to accept or modify those minutes? Motion to debate second, any discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed?
Abstain.
The motion carries. County Council calendar will be here next Thursday at thirty, um, Chamber. Boarding of Commissions. We have, uh, on Monday, four P M. Eastern Pan of Transit Authority, six P M. Planning Commission, Tuesday, nine A M. Councilperson Whitaker, B O N W R and R, nine thirty A M. Parks and Rec, five P M. Sewer District, six P M. Stormwater District. Wednesday, the twenty-second, ten A M. CBB, three P M. Senior Services. Thursday, uh, five P M. Ambulance Authority here in the Chamber, five P M. Library. Any changes or corrections on the Boarding of Commissions? We have a cancelled check request from the County Clerk's Finance Office, any questions on that one? We have a bond reduction for Oakwood, uh, H H L L C, Heritage Hills, Section One, Phase Five, file number zero four four dash zero five, lots two thirty-eight to two forty-nine. Any questions on that? We have a resolution with West, West Virginia Development Office, uh, Community Block Grant Program for the Burke County Broadband Strategic Plan. Any questions on that one? And then we have an order established to fund zero-two-two with the United Bank for Lexon Insurance for Washington Trails. We've talked about that for several weeks, any questions on that? If not, accept and obtain a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda. Motion to debate second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Alright, Mr. Hess, good morning, sir.
I know if I was in your shoes, I'd be so glad I didn't have to pronounce any names anymore.
Yeah, it's just tough, I know. I just say, hey, you.
Ah, it's crazy.
Anyway, good morning. We had quite a busy week last week, so I got a few things this morning. Uh, first thing I think's on the list would be the, uh, we had a taxpayer error correction, um, for Sylvia Kirby for two hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. She did, uh, report her twenty-eighteen Jeep Cherokee, and so if they do that, we have to write them up as a taxpayer error, so, but that's only one of those I have today.
Have a motion on floor, second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Oh, sir.
You wanna withdraw that?
I withdraw that.
Alright, alright. The Nays? Alright, the motion, let's the record show that the motion failed. Alright, you have five personal tax exemptions due to officer error.
Yes, I do, personal property officer errors for, uh, the last week, uh, we have five total for the descriptions that's listed there, reasons for the exemptions, uh, if you total them up, they come up to a thousand, eighty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents for those five.
There we have, uh, there can motion on five personal tax exemption due to officer error.
Motion to accept the five personal property officer error.
Have a motion on floor?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. You have seven real estate tax exemption due to officer error.
I do, these for real estate, and, uh, most of them are for Ricky and the homestead exemption that had got missed for some reasons, but the one for, uh, the, uh, business tax exempt for the Development Authority, that, they purchased that, but they, they purchased it after, um, the July one date of eighteen. So, the nineteen tax bill is, is billed to them, but the twenty tax bill, usually when they buy something, they, or anybody with a business, if they want exempt, they need to fill an application out, and the Development Authority, since they are automatically exempt, they don't usually do that, so, that got slipped through, but, uh, you know, we haven't corrected because it's automatically exempt, but that was, alone was twenty-four thousand nine thirty and forty cents.
Right.
But, anyway, they shouldn't have been billed, but the total of all those seven comes up to twenty-nine thousand, four thirty-one, sixty-nine.
Okay, this time I can't motion on the seven state taxes on a ratio due to officer error.
Back the motion that we accept the seven state officer error is coming to twenty-nine thousand.
Questions to debate, I have a second. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Good, thank you. I do have one other thing, an application for consolidation for Sylvia Landis, uh, they have, uh, in Hedgesville District, you had three parcels, and they just wanted to put them together to get one tax bill, and, uh, so that's the only thing I got on consolidations, just that one.
There can motion on consolidation of property.
Motion to accept the consolidation property.
Questions to debate, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Oh, again? Thank you.
Mr. Heskey, we go, were we supposed to get one more tax bill?
Okay.
I got my personal property, I didn't want to get the mistake.
Yeah, there's, a lot of them had that happen. They got two, but they didn't get the, the, uh, the other, but I had a couple of calls yesterday that was the same way. They'll be in the mail, they, they come, they come from Charleston that we don't send them out.
I just wanted to make a footnote on record, I didn't get any mail. Russell, don't expect no payment.
That's, that's a good thing, isn't it? I mean, you don't have to pay, you don't get a bill.
No, 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 that's not how they operate down there. If they don't give you a bill, you still, they still expect you to pay. They'll, they'll mark it down, let it not pay.
Yeah, I got, alright, thank you.
Boarding meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Burke County Public Service Water is repeating, uh, the, uh, two design plans for a cargo point, Section Three of the cargo level. That also, uh, does, you know, water service termination agreement, I think, going back to cutting people's water off. Try to hear somewhere. From the back, probably the end of July. Having a bit of a problem, the Procter gamble usage during the month of June averaged eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand pounds a day, and it's going up, uh, not the approach of the rain gallon, and they're having trouble maintaining water levels throughout the system. Brooks Corner Tank is a little bit low, in fact, they ran an extra shift to bring it up, buying more water from the city of Martinsburg, they have to buy more water, have the water level due in, uh, on the hill, and then they're also having a, uh, pumping test on the Golden Mill Road, uh, Sondale.
So, the issue is, so that's what Paul's been talking about for years, is the transition line, right?
Yeah, getting it from point A to point B, and with over hill stressing, the level of water stressing, we put, well, we'd be in trouble, uh, get it from the Martinburg to the Golden River, that takes some chuffing and adjusting.
Tanks are, they're, they're not up to running twenty-four seven? So, they're, they're running...
They can't, they can't run them automatically, they have to be somebody there.
So, they're, alright, okay, so once the tanks are full, then they tap that last something out?
Yeah, and Martinburg, they're, stops operation at the quarry site, uh, to, to they, they consider questioning Martinburg, an additional shift.
Right, so that's a fairly easy thing.
Yeah.
I mean, you sell the water, you got the revenue.
Proving one is improving order quality, quantity of the Buckle Hill plan, but also they're developing lines in the, Toby River plan.
I think a long time ago, I remember talking about running a line down Baxter Road, I thought it was a thirty-six inch line. Seems awful big, but...
Well, that was a while ago, now we work on a great line of road.
To get it up to, around the corner, bro.
The, the, Bill Miller...
They may need to have to put in another stand button.
That'd be easy, um, be easy to dig it to their shell ground.
Other than where?
They're gonna follow the power line, I think.
Yeah.
The Golden Mill Road site is always been an option though, hasn't it?
Yeah, but they wanna, they wanna up, uptick the, see how much water is there, because a couple of wells are under surface influence and they have to be cultivated.
Right.
One well's not being, never been used, uh, pumping, uh, they, they wanna tighten up to see, see what's there.
They got a high yield on that, on one of them.
What is the, what is the maximum pressure that water, um, that they should be, the water line should be?
Pike side, probably the pump system, there's down, one of them, pump system, they may improve, uh, yeah, so they, they upped the pumping capacity. Plus the stand button, stand button.
It's like, putting a longer shift or an extra shift, is it, but it keep, they go.
That'd be, that's a deep hole, but it's still out before you...
Sure, yeah, that's, that's been talked about for a long time.
Yeah, it's seventy years old.
Also, it's done to think it's seventy years old.
Why you think I'm looking out this way?
That's what I thought.
I wasn't looking that way.
I'm, I'm there too.
So, yeah, alright, Ms. Martin?
I told you, I tried to get an update on the, the combination of Route eighty-one and Route ninety-five coalition, the information I have right currently is Eastern Transportation Coalition, that's what it's going to be called. Person that is in charge of the, of the I ninety-five is the lead on this, her name's Patricia Henderson, and I'm gonna be getting back to her to see where we are with Carolyn Blatton and all those other stuff. I haven't gotten anything except the notice that this stuff's coming through and, uh, but, and all kinds of things and for websites to go to to find out what's going on, but I haven't been able to nail all that down. Um, had a, uh, had a Zoom meeting with the Government Affairs Transportation Committee, uh, with the Chamber, and the presenters were Shelly Moore Capito's office, Chris Stovall, and Keith McIntosh and Ryan Coram from Senator John Manchin's office. They brought up the fact that, uh, there's going to be some funding, small business, excuse me, some funding for, uh, because, uh, many of the things that are nonprofit, not businesses, that there'll be some way for some of those folks, because so many of them depended on events, it didn't happen. So, I don't know how that's gonna be addressed, but it's in, the newest bill is supposedly that they're working on. There's additional money for small business in West Virginia, it's up to a million dollars. And one of the things that they, uh, addressed, Chris Stovall did, Shelly Moore Capito has gotten a new committee, uh, which has to do with transportation, she got to be the chairman of this Public Works Committee in Transportation. From two thousand thirteen to eighteen, there was only two, ten million dollars given to West Virginia. She is now chairman of this committee, and at quarter age, they just got a hundred and thirty-two million dollars. That's major, and the section, I believe, is, is at Moore Field that they're addressing, uh, that taken care of.
I saw one of those, it's, it's already over to Patterson's Creek.
They did what they said, but I...
Only thing they got to do between Patterson's Creek and Elkens, that's the part that started, Elkens started coming back this way, years and years, that was first of them. And the other thing that they're, they need to do, uh, it takes cooperation with West Virginia to get it from eighty-one.
Right, right, that's the deal, that's on Route twenty-six.
Route fifty-five.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, it's good that they're making progress.
The other thing that's coming that, uh, Shelly Moore...
Yeah. So, it's just that gap between Parsons and, and Elkens that they gotta be talking about.
That's that hundred and thirty-four million, but they didn't address what, where, they just, so I've got the notes here with the money, but I didn't have a location. Uh, the other thing that they talked about was that there's a development highway system, uh, there's, uh, Appalachian funds, and so many of the states that are involved, I think Tennessee and Kentucky and those, have filled in all the, they've used up their funds that they're available for that are, we call approved. So, what's happening now is they've gotten, she's gotten approval that if the Appalachian funds were getting funded... if your state can't use them, then it can be put back in the pot, and West Virginia will be eligible for those, because we got, we have a whole lot more projects than we have opportunity for money, to get money. So that was a, a great thing. She's working on broadband and the work in the, the panhandle. Of course, that's always a problem. And then they talked about Keith McIntosh got up and was talking about the fact that they've addressed over sixty thousand constituents with problems from census to trying to get an appointment with DMV and trying to get funding and get their checks from the federal government. So they've had a number of things. Plus, the broadband issue has been front and center with Joe Manchin's office too. Right now, out of the COVID, they got fifty-eight million for West Virginia. Has to do with regular hospitals. Eighteen million goes to ROR, forty million go to the regular hospitals. And so the work with testing and a lot of things are going forward. They did state that the money for land and water, the full funding did pass the Senate. Guess they're waiting for the House to do something, but that's where that is. They've got more mainstream lending going on. And quite a bit of things that are happening. They're doing a pilot project, which is an area that has to do hotspots. So I, and I, I have a sheet that I printed off, and I don't have it here, that has the contacts, and I'll give everybody one of those. I thought I had it with this pack, I just left it over my desk. That was the contacts. That'll be Joe Manchin's office, so I'll get that to you. So it was a very interesting meeting. I told Anthony this morning about it. I said, the feedback, people know your home. Number of phone calls and the number of Zoom meetings and stuff seem to be escalating. Just totally out of control, because they know your home. Anyway, the other meeting was the Brooklyn County Farmland. And they have a number of issues going there. Let me address the transfer tax. Our transfer tax from nineteen to twenty went up thirty-two thousand dollars. So that's a minor change. The year before, I think it went up four hundred thousand. So we had, so with all this pandemic, things have slowed down a little bit. Now, the other, some of the things that's going on, we still have, I like, seven houses, seven properties that we're working for to get farmland protection. And they're just working their way through planning and Mark Stone and myself, I'm gonna be working with Jim Woodard on that, couple of issues that I think they're, they're hit a stumbling block, but I don't know why, so we're gonna go back and look at that. And we are looking at some properties. And the federal government, the one, I won't mention the name of the property. This property has been on our list to be taken care of the last three or four years. We were on the edge of getting everything taken care of this in the next month. And the feds came back and wanted something else. I mean, it's just like, every time we get close to this one property, it just keeps, there's always something else in the works. And last but not least, we had a couple of issues with the roundhouse, one of which was the construction meeting. The main thrust of the construction meeting, this wonderful state of West Virginia that has nothing to do with the fact, the grant money, they have not paid the contractor. There are three invoices, and that was the number one conversation on Wednesday. I did, to give the state, and, and they said, well, we have to go through the account, then we've gotta go through the audit department, then we've gotta go through the check writing. Where are these people been? I'm sorry. And we wrote those checks, I mean, the first check was written March. And the second was written in April, and now the last one was written in June sometime, and we got one more to go, and this poor contractor had gotten done. So it's not good. And we had our regular roundhouse meeting, and the issue right now, as of July fourteenth, no events, fairs or concerts coming up. It means most of the activities are canceled for the rest of the year. We're looking to see if we can salvage maybe the Christmas show, I don't know, with things that are coming up. Amtrak, if you get a chance, go down, look at the new lighting. It's phenomenal on that platform. It goes all the way down, way past the station, so it's phenomenal. We're gonna get, we have some light, dusted on lights on some of those poles in the building that we're gonna get moved to the backside now, because everything in the front's been taken care of. So that was taken care of. I, I got a list of B and O employees from nineteen forty-nine forward, going through the city directory, I had stacks of lists. So they're now on the website. And so if anybody has relatives that are on that list or looking for call-ins about that, I've got home contacts for that. And we're hoping to maybe get a homecoming in November. And a young lady, Claire Tyron, who is our backcourt, has already completed the artifacts room, all of the stuff, reorganized the drawers. She said, if you give me tie tags, I'll mark everything now. So I'm going, the other person took a picture of the drawer and said, there it is. So it's interesting. She's a phenomenal person. We're still looking for community service cleanup, and we are open on Saturdays from ten to four. We do have masks, we do have antibacterial, but we do, we do need some stuff for cleanup, because there's a couple weddings still hanging on, trying to make sure that they can have it, because, but their bottom line is our space is big enough to spread them out, so that's what's happening.
Good. Mr. Delia.
Um, we did have an airport meeting and elected, elected new officers. The the discussion about the upcoming purchase that took place yesterday was, was one of the topics in the airport meeting. And yesterday, ended up purchasing the FBO and, and the, the hangars. So the, the airport is, is definitely staged to, to become a, a major player in the aeronautic field, definitely in our region moving forward. So, good stuff.
Good. It's, it's exciting times.
It is, it is. Airport Authority, everybody on the board involved and excited about what's going on, and, and everybody's worked hard to it. You know, can't say enough about Nick and Neil for their time and effort spent.
Not to, not to say anything about the, the past, the history of the Airport Authority, but Dan, I'd like to take this time out to thank you for, for outstanding job on the Airport Authority, and really taking off since you've been there. And starting by hiring the right people in the right place. And with Neil, and also suddenly now Nick taking advantage of being smart enough to, to see that, you know, Nick was up in Quer, a home, I should say. After the Rockwell insulation, insulation deal down, down in Jefferson County, and it's far enough to say, hey, you need a new home, let's, let's talk. But anyway, it's exciting times for the Airport Authority, and I think, you know, for the existence of that airport. It has full potential of becoming a awesome airport, a great airport for this community, more so today than whatever happened in the past, so thank you.
Yep, well, I appreciate that. We have a very energetic and, and, you know, engaged board, and, and very fortunate to have those, that group out there working and, and understanding how, how you have to, how you have to be, set aggressive goals in order to make aggressive moves, you know?
And that, I mean, the same way Barnhart with the water district, Eric always on top of things, trying to make sure that, that we have sustainable water amounts, trying to look at. It's funny, they have very active board, they're five wood members. Never miss a board meeting.
Right.
But you do met, now we're checking director, what is the job? And they're always looking forward, they're gonna have Procter gamble brings hanging over their head.
Right.
They gotta get the product down. A lot of activity that could go with authority, but somebody's gonna need some additional water.
And, you know, I don't know if Brian Shager not, he's headed the Well, no, he's headed the lines.
Okay. Good mission, huh?
Yeah. Well, a little.
Ms. Ball, the progress you did back with the roundhouse authority, getting this, Eric, finally getting your bathrooms under construction.
Oh, I'm telling you, we're gonna, I say, the sad part is, we're gonna have the bathrooms, not be able to have an event.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm sure the Roundhouse Authority is looking at some possibility of some COVID CARES Act money, also revenue and stuff.
Well, going back to the airport, Mr. President, I'm glad to see that it's moving forward, because I know when I started, it was, the famous line was, that's the way we've always done it. And, you know, to get folks that can see the big picture, or to even want to attempt to see the big picture. It doesn't matter what committees we have, that is the key to everybody being successful, is getting visionaries. And, and so many, it's, you know, us as the group, and when we started with the thirty-five committees, we've changed, as a group, we've changed all of these committees around, getting, moving into the visionary side, to look where the transit authority is. Because when we started, they were coming in every two weeks because they couldn't make payroll. You know?
Exactly, right.
So there's a lot of things that, that, thanks to the committee, the council being as they are, being proactive, getting visionaries on the board, it's been significant to the success of Brooklyn County.
Funny that you talk about vision, because I've been, in between everything else, when I'm on, on the back, I have a radio. But I want other equipment on, so they're trying to listen to the, to the forum that the County Ten has, and all of the talk on the forum for the city of Roanoke here is a vision. The good thing about vision for the county council, we, we have a great vision, and we put it to work, we made it happen. And that's, that's what this county's done over the last years.
Since eleven, since eleven.
And has every year from then, when Dan came on, it, it ended up another notch up, or a couple notches either, but, you know, that's, that's how we, that's one thing that you have to have is a vision and got the, the energy to go and make that new vision become reality. And one of the things we always talked about, but the Roundhouse Authority should be the anchor of downtown. And, and then you got the Pollin, which our grant writers are trying to work on a grant for them to refurbish Pollin. I think they're redoing Martin Street right now with brick payers and all that stuff, right? So there's your gateway coming in from the rail system. Right back, back the other way. And the vision to expand downtown. So, it'll be exciting times.
I think, I think things are, are moving forward.
So hopefully, we, we can see that vision come to reality here before long.
What, what a better time than twenty twenty to talk about a clear vision.
Kind of like that, we're looking forward to our two hundred and fiftieth in, what, what we can show in two years.
Well, while we're talking about that, that's leading me into my next thing, my board and commission meeting, but actually the number one did not meet yesterday because of the lack of, of coral. But one thing we've been working out with, with Davis and Anthony and Nova now is their bond rating for Moody's. So we're still working on that, should have been, we scheduled to be in a meeting today. So I had to ask Tracy and Penny really quick on how to pronounce all those names, or come close to pronounce them. And, but we're, we had a really good meeting with Matt for a bond rating, and, and Mr. Davis, I think he almost had to stay up all night long, because I know the question that moment until late one, the night before. And at eight o'clock that morning, he had all this, all the questions answered and responded to, which the Matt from Moody's was very impressed, and wasn't even expecting a response of that kind. Very impressed, he's very impressed with what the county's doing. Very impressed with the, why we need to expand our day report center. And looking to, at least, as you know, with the COVID nineteen and the state and all that stuff, saying that they, you know, need to backfill some of the budget. He was very impressed with where we stand financially. And so we're looking at the minimum to keep our bond rating where it is today, which is far better than what it was when we got here.
Oh, yes.
And our bond council, meaning KM Secruses, thinking that there's a inkling that it may be improved by one notch, but no promises. If so, that would be extraordinary. We're also, I'm gonna brief you a little bit, which we'll have to get into some, into some, you know, agenda, sure, in the very near future. One of the things that I've always said could be an issue is the Kenco property, where the day report center is, which is five twenty on the go, is all one partial. And I was talking with Greg Isaac about the possibility, whether it need to be subdivided or not, he said he felt like it didn't need to be subdivided, that it would be okay. Well, it does need to be subdivided. Or the other option that we're gonna be entertaining is to go back and just refinance the whole project. And if we refinance, right now, it was a two thousand eleven bond, we, I'm sorry, two thousand four, four, six is when the, the county commission bought Kenco property, I think two thousand six. We financed the sheriff's department in two thousand eleven. Structured the Kenco property. Two thousand fourteen, when we knew our bond, everything was looking good, the bond rating and, and, and interest rates were dropping, we, we modified that in two thousand fourteen. It took it from like three point, if my memory serves me correctly, three point seven five down to two point nine. Currently, if we're successful, and projections will be coming to me here before long, we could possibly take that two point nine percent, maybe plus or minus slightly around two percent. So, and a lot of people don't understand, you know, the rainy day fund and all this, and that's the only thing that we really need to prove upon, show Moody's that we, we got their, their goal of being minimal amount of, I think, fifteen percent. Is to, you can only imagine the difference on a, on a four point two million dollar bond, with the initial, no, that's the balance, about, approximately about, the balance is four point two, of dropping almost a whole percent of rate, and not lengthening the term, or not interested in lengthening any terms. So some pretty good, exciting, exciting things going there. As I said, I was supposed to be in a meeting with Moody's today, this morning, but they rescheduled it. But hopefully, I know that the last time we got improvement, and the last time we, we refinanced thirty-four million dollar bond, it saved us over three hundred and some thousand dollars a year in payments.
Much, much better investment to put it in, to put money into the rainy day fund than to use that cash to pay down on something, because if you use that cash to pay down on something, it doesn't help your bond rating. And you, you can't buy that down, basically. So by buying that down, you end up with such a better, such a better fiscal responsible
Right.
move by the county in order to finance something for the, for the taxpayers that have to pay.
And we say, we say this all the time, Dan, you know, we hit a home run, we picked the perfect time to refinance or, or borrow money. And, and I know Mr. Wyden, we talk about it all the time, is, you know, you're we talk about this on other projects throughout the, the county. And the state of West Virginia City is, can't borrow money cheaper than what we gonna borrow today. So and you and I, and a lot of people in the room, understand that when you turn back around, the cost of construction just goes up astronomically. So the one good thing about the sheriff's department was that it, the cost of construction was eighty-seven dollars a square foot of the remodel, and the price of money, two point nine percent. It's a home run both ways. And so the longer you put them on, you don't get to use the facility, which we know what that does to our work environment. And, and to sign that interest, I mean, it's just crazy.
Well, and, and the flip side of it is, what we're saving from that entity paying taxes, you know, or, or paying jail costs, I mean.
Right.
You know, it's, it's, it's a huge, huge win, any way you look at it. I mean, what have we come in, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars under budget this year? On the jail cost?
Yes, seven hundred bucks.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's huge, that's huge, especially when that's the same budget we've had since I've been here. And by, by the, by the. And by, by the, by the, by the programs that we've implemented at, at mostly a federal cost, not cost to us, we've been getting reimbursement. I mean, look at what, look at what we're saving, so it makes sense to take that money and put it into, uh, into the rainy day fund and, um. And be able to keep that interest rate down, uh, to benefit the taxpayers by doing these things and, uh, and lowering the interest rate.
Day report center is about one point three million dollar budget. And, and a dollar cluster minus.
Mr. President, you were talking about the fact of refinancing the funds, before we came here, they never did anything. They had never done anything, and then the council, the commission at that time, because of financial strafiness and everything else. You know, they weren't even able to pay, ask, they were just paying, uh, print, uh, interest only on stuff. So this is just been a win-win all the way around because the building isn't sitting there useless and everything, and, uh. Jippenland came in at eighty-seven dollars, that's where plus the savings on the, on the bond side.
Well, one, one of the things that contractors think about all the time, when you're in construction, you live and die on interest rates. I mean, your business lives and dies on interest rates, so for, you know, it makes total sense that, you know, once you got into council, that's something that you're gonna look at all the time. You know, I, I look at, I look at interest rates and payments all the time, and if you can, if you can save a little bit on it, it makes sense to. Makes sense to spend a little bit to go ahead and invest into lowering that rate.
Right. The more I adjust in turn. If you turn the twenty or thirty, that's about what I'm going to do. It's hot. Right.
Wow.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we do best, you know? I might not be able to pronounce names, but I can, I can run numbers.
I'll take the numbers over the names any day.
Me too. That, I did, I told you all, I did go look for my old, uh, English and, and literature teacher, and I found her.
Did you remember her name?
I did, Mrs. Smeltzer, and I, and I apologized to her for not paying attention. You know?
Did she give you the I told you story?
Nah, nah, she just said, I forgot all about you, I, I googled you again.
Yeah, where, where are you at?
I didn't even recall you being in the class. So.
She must not have been too bad if she forgot about you.
Yeah. All right, um, uh, board and commission vacancies, what are we gonna do then?
Mr. President, I have a couple. Tracy, I want to appoint Christopher Cox to fulfill Kevin Searings' term, when, when was his term up?
Um, yeah, the term expired December third, two thousand and twenty-two. No, it's on your sheet.
I don't have a sheet.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Okay, so let's, let's, let's start again, I'd like to appoint Christopher Cox to complete Kevin Searings' term on landmarks to December of two thousand and twenty-two.
Yep.
December third, two thousand and twenty-two, second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
I'd like to also appoint, uh, Jay Jack to finish Kevin's, uh, term on the Roundhouse. When's that thing?
May first, twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Okay, so the May first, two thousand and twenty.
And whose position is he backfilling?
He's taking Kevin's position.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion on that one? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a, uh, uh, three appointments actually to the, uh, reappointments to the criminal justice board for Homer Speaker, Harold Slaughter, and Aaron Konter.
All right. Motion been made second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
If I could have a couple minutes to have a conversation too, I'd like to, I'd like to talk a little bit about, uh, about the development authority and a little bit about history and, uh. And dedication, um, we have, uh, uh, we have a term that, uh, um, that has just expired for, uh, Bob Butler. And Bob's been on that board, uh, a good while, and we also have a, um, we have another member, um, Jim Cyber. That was on that board since, uh, since it started, um, Jim's, Jim's term was off last year, um, but, uh. I, I would like to have a conversation and see if this, this group is willing to, uh, um, to appoint a couple of people to that board as emeritus members. Um, because of, uh, um, because of their time and their dedication and, and, um. And the value that, uh, that they brought to that county board.
Sounds like that. Um. He's gonna, I was just wiping off, we're not sending him any, but then news.
Yeah.
How's your bylaws address that?
Um, we don't have anything in the bylaws that, uh, um, addresses that it can't be done.
Like one of the other, um, members that have sat on that board for many, many years was Greg Agol, above. And they can't, at twenty years plus on that board.
Right.
Um, if not more than that, uh, I've heard you've been on for a long time, so. Yeah, I'd like to plan to, in charge that, if that's appropriate, and make sure that we can do something like that. Yeah. It would be.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and their, their value to come to meetings and give some input in history, I think, would be a benefit.
Right, well, let's consider that, we'll back it up. I'll be good.
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to maybe bring it back up next week if possible.
Anything else? All right, moving on, discussion of COVID nineteen. Brian? You appear to be the only one here today. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Does the Amless Authority dawn?
Well, good question.
I'm hoping for an answer.
No, actually, uh, we're poised pretty well right now, um. As some of you may or may not know, as I said, we had a few resignations, uh, folks moving on to bigger and better things as they see it. Um, grass is always greener on the other side. But it afforded us an opportunity to bring in some, uh, fresh perspective and ideas on our subdued hires. Um, as you know, almost, with almost thirty-four years of experience, uh, Carla Robinson will be retiring here in a few months. So we're currently pursuing a replacement for her or someone.
Carter's always been a joyful person to be around, at least when I'm around, I don't know about you, but.
Okay, we'll go with your perspective. But, no, she's, she's good people and she's always been a source of, uh. History for me to ask, you know, have we tried this, has this ever been done, what were the obstacles if such, and how do we get around those things, but, uh. Sometimes she can be a pain too, that's okay.
Patty, does this say anything else?
Hey, there you go. Wow, touche.
Blaze them along, tell her how it is.
That's it.
Well, no, no, I'm saying, we, we, we honor you and we respect you and we say, yes, Ms. Patty.
Oh, okay.
Huh? No, 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 you know, it's kind of like, kind of like being married, you know? It's like, yes, ma'am.
Yeah. But no, in all honesty, uh, we've had to, as, as you guys read and, read, see on TV, read, whatever. Uh, things are starting to ramp back up again with our COVID. So we're having to change our posture level, of course, to where now. All of our people, we've put out our policy, hey, guys, every call you run on, N ninety-five mask, enter it as if this is a potential, uh, person under. Uh, investigation, as we call it, of interest. Uh, we monitor that through our shift reports every day as to what's going on. So we will be ramped up a little bit, as you guys have heard or read, we seem to have the, what'd they say, the highest transmission factor in, uh, in the, in the country right now, so that's concerning. I'd like to know where those numbers come from.
You have what now?
We have the highest transmission rate of COVID from person to person in the state of West Virginia. As compared to the other forty-eight states, that are forty-nine states, but the other forty-seven in the lower forty-eight. Um, I'm trying to figure out that formula based on what they're basing their numbers off of, but. Can't seem to find that anywhere, so we're just watching our local stuff here, preparing for what could be something a little more exciting, as they say, moving down the road. But, uh, we're prepared, you know, we are prepared, we're still, like everybody else, working through the Department of Justice grant to get. Disfectant N ninety-fives, Tyvek suits, everything we need. We've, uh, received twelve of the upgraded positive air pressure respirators, pathers is what they call them. We received those over the last month, so we'll be getting them out to the EOC, the Amless Authority. And the EOC will have four for the sheriff's department's use as well, so. We're looking at those things, and I'm almost certain that if the health department went down to EOC and said, hey, we're. Conducting some sort of testing or whatever, and we'd like to utilize these pieces of equipment, that could be arranged as well. But, uh. Other than that, it's kind of just waiting for, waiting for the next thing to come down, um. Not too sure what that's going to be, but we're, we're ready, we're prepared, we'll be prepared. And subject any questions that you guys might have in relationship to what we're doing for COVID, I'm gonna. Get out of the microphone.
You don't have any questions, other than kind of interested in finding out what you're, what they're meeting with that state?
I, I'm trying to figure that out too, it, it's, it's based on, on, you know. How quickly there's, the spread person to person is happening faster for some reason, I don't know if it's due to comorbidities of our population. Or what the comparison is they're using, um. I haven't figured that out yet, but their numbers are somewhere in the neighborhood, I guess normal right now is like point nine seven, they're saying that West Virginia as a whole is at one point three seven transmission factor. That's to Dr. Clay Marsh, the, uh, state COVID czar, so. We're gonna reach out to his office and find it, okay, what exactly is this equation, or what is this based on? How's it being monitored, how does the information being, uh, data mined and things like that, but. You know, because that is a concern that if in fact, I mean, it could not be here, he could say, oh, well, it's predominantly in Montegalia County, but we just don't know, so. That's some of the information that we're trying to work through right now, so we're prepared.
Well, and that's the biggest problem we really have, isn't it, is really to get good information to be able to, uh, evaluate.
It is, you know, you want to constantly, it's, it's very dynamic, so you want to stay on top of it, and it's something that you want to look at on a daily basis. Um, it's, it's no different than when Haida came in here and provided us with the, you know, the OD maps that. We wanted to look at stuff and we could begin to see as, you know, overdoses started and flowed this way and then flowed back out, we. You know, is there a tool out there that we can start to look at? How these numbers push, just like when this started, we saw the bordering counties were the ones that began to get hit. With COVID and then it moved into the center of the state and went back out and now it's. You know, it's like a set of lungs, breathe in, breathe out, so. We just really, that, that's just one big thing that stood out to myself and my staff is, okay. If you're saying that out of the forty-eight, we're there, what is that data base off of? And we haven't got an answer yet to it, but.
And, and has more testing affected that, that whole number, you know? Obviously, we're doing extremely more testing now than we ever did, you know, there, there's something just, just, uh, sitting here that popped into my head. So do we know, do we know, um, about people that have, uh, been positive, had COVID? Is there still a danger for, um, them getting again? Do we know if there's that type of problem and, and, and the reason it just popped into my head is because obviously, um, obviously. Your employees are susceptible highly, you know, they're in, in an environment that they have to deal with sick people all the time. If, if that would be a good thing to have the knowledge on, because if you have people that have, um, been through that already. You know, to be able to utilize them to handle those type of calls may be a really big thing.
Sure.
Uh, Dr. Reedy just texted me and said, I will provide the information, it would be helpful, counsel made a request before today, so.
Okay.
So it sounds like he's asking for our help so we can get it, um, try to get to that.
Well, that's good, that's a good thing. But to answer your question, most of the research, what it's telling us is that it is a, um, short-term antibody that stays with us, much like the normal flu would. Um, I think right now, what the numbers are putting that around is somewhere between four to six months. That person can have it and that antibody stay with them for that period of time, which. Just like a normal flu, may not prevent you from getting it a second time, but would definitely hasten the effects.
Right.
Of, of getting it. I think there's also, you have different viral strains of the COVID out there because. You, you look at the damage that was done in, in New York, but then you look at other places, it wasn't that bad, now we're going back through, you look at Houston, California, Arizona. It's devastating these places, and it's like, wow, this doesn't appear to be the same COVID strain that we're having here, you know, so. There's still a lot of questions to figure out, is companies still working on the vaccine? Um, that's all we can do, is, is fight this battle one day at a time until. Somebody comes up with the, the nuclear option, so to say, that vaccine, so. We'll continue to do it, uh, there was a round of antibody testing provided last week that was, uh, free of charge to our providers. Um, something that we offered up to them, I don't know how many had taken us up on it. But, uh, we did make that option available, because some people say, well, I got, you know, we, uh, had a new hire that we just hired that actually had to wait because he had COVID. But he said the only symptoms that he had was like a runny nose and he felt yucky is how he put it. Went and got tested, yeah, you got COVID, and he went through his timeframe and now he's symptom-free and, and all of that, so. It's, it's, it's still a very elusive thing, but the only thing we can do is monitor it day to day, protect ourselves, do the right thing, and. We will get through it.
Absolutely. Any other questions for Brian?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Any, uh, fighters for the public? Sure, please.
That's what I call results.
That might, right, so we'll just compare nineteen to twenty, because it's actually what happened, so. Um, Janu-, and I'll run down, because we've done through June, so I'll make it easy, collectively, it's down thirty-five percent total. Uh, Ju-, January, it was down twenty-nine percent, we're talking, you know, thirty-six, three to twenty-five, six. Uh, February was down sixty-three percent, uh, March, it was up twelve percent, April down two, May down twenty-nine, and June down sixty-three.
Whoa.
Yeah.
And then June's the top.
Yeah, down sixty, it's, so twenty-nine, seven last year, uh, ten, ten thousand, nine hundred dollars this year. So collectively thirty-five percent for the first six months.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other fighters for the public? If not, Mr. Barnhart, you do the honors.
Well, I thank you, Mr. President, and I will move to research.
We are researching.